Well, I'll call us to order if everyone's ready. Now that your tardy chairman has arrived, I'll go ahead and call us to order this evening. And we'll get started on this, what is a little different mission tonight relative to training. So should we go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance and so forth, or just go into the training session? Okay. All right. Well, let's go ahead and open in prayer. We'll have a pledge of allegiance and then we'll move forward then. Father, we're thankful to be here together tonight, and I'm thankful for this beautiful day, and I'm thankful for this board. I'm thankful for folks that want to serve the public, that want to serve others for others' benefit. And we just appreciate always your guidance and direction. In Christ's name I give thanks. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll skip the opening statement, and of course, we have no public comment or adjustments to the agenda. So I would ask for a vote on the, adopting the agenda. So if I could have a motion in a second on that, please. So we have a motion from Mr. Mack. Do I have a second?
Second.
We, we have a second, and all in favor? Aye. So the agenda is adopted, is given and approved. How about the consideration for the approval of minutes? Do we have a motion in a second on that? So we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Do I have a second? We have a second from Mr. Mack. All in favor? Aye. No old business, or is there any old business? Okay. New business would be the, well, we don't have new business as a matter of course, so we just move to administrative items. Where you have the planning board training and... And I pray you all forgive me. It's been a little scattered day for me, and it's been a fast-paced agenda in my day since 5:30. So I may be slightly scattered, so I'll ask a little pardon for that.
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay. I will hopefully make this pretty quick and painless. So why are we here? Here's just kind of a list of goals for today, some questions that I hope to answer. And hopefully you will leave here with a plan as far as how to plan for meetings and how to prep for meetings. So the goals for this presentation is for you to understand planning board duties, to understand the different roles and the different types of decisions being made, and hopefully improve not only as a board member, but as an advisory board. Some of the questions that I'll answer are, you know, why this matters procedurally, practically, conflicts of interest. And then we'll also talk about some permissible and impermissible considerations for decisions. And then again, we'll, we'll just talk about, you know, best practices for how to prepare for a meeting. So here are all the various boards that are involved in land use and development for the town of Mooresville. We of course have our planning department. You are the planning board. We also have Historic Preservation Commission that deals with historic landmarks. And then we also have the Board of Adjustment that also acts as our watershed review board. And they look at variances and special use permits. And then of course, the final decisions for most things will be made by the Board of Commissioners. So you as a planning board are an advisory board. You provide written recommendations to the governing board and specifically address the consistency of text amendments with the adopt, with the adopted comprehensive plan. You advise on rezoning applications, text amendment, concept plans. And the governing board is not bound by your recommendation, but you do advise them. And very importantly, and we'll talk about this a little bit later too, the planning board is subject to open meeting rules. And as I'm sure you're already aware, to pass, currently the UDO requires an affirmative vote of a majority of the actual membership of the board. A little bit of background on municipal authority and what you can and can't do, and what the town can and can't do. So in North Carolina, there is no inherent authority for a local government to act. Meaning every act that the town can make has to be given to it by statute or a local bill. The state legislature ultimately determines what this board and what the town can and can't do. Terms that you should know, yes.
What would be an example of local bills?
Of a local bill?
What would be an example of local bills? Understand what the statutes are. Where do the local bills come from?
Well, so local bills would be like special bills. Like for instance, if the town board annexed property and a property wanted to be de-annexed. We don't actually have the authority to de-annex property that's already been brought into the town. So that's something that like us, that we would have to go to the state legislature for to get a special bill.
So it would still be a state legislated bill, but it would be local to our community?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Yes. I will make that more clear, because now that I'm hearing that question, I see how that's confusing. Okay, so terms that you should know, so annexation is the process by which the town adds land to our jurisdiction and extends services such as sewer, water, fire and police. We only do voluntary annexations, and voluntary annexations are generally prohibited. The next two terms are terms that I'm sure you're very familiar with. The, the two types of zonings or rezonings. You have conditional, in which you can attach conditions to the development. These conditions do have to be agreed upon by the owner. Or we have conventional or by right zoning. And that's where it is a base district, and you have a list of permitted uses, and there's really no conditions that go with the zoning. Dwelling units per acre, this is the description of density allowed in a particular district. Extraterritorial jurisdiction, these are the areas beyond the town limits where the town can extend its zoning and development authority. We can't extend all of our authorities, so for instance, there might be some ordinances in our town code. We would not be able to extend our jurisdiction to ETJ for, for those particular ordinances, but for the purpose of the UDO, we can. Oops, sorry. And then the One Mooresville Comprehensive Land Use Plan. That is the plan that sets forth the goals, policies and programs intended to guide present and future physical, social and economic development in Mooresville. So term, additional terms, yes. That's okay.
Just a little bit more, so ETJ properties. We said here, it, the area must, must be released from the county.
Correct.
So ETJs are released, that's their specific property, it's already released from the county.
So we typically have to ask the county, so our authority can potentially extend up to three miles past the town limits. However, the default is that that land is the county's. So if we want to bring a property into our jurisdiction, we have to ask the county to release it to us.
And then we annex it.
You don't have to annex it. You, you can remain in the ETJ.
But you don't pay town tax, that's an ETS. And you don't have one or two.
Correct.
So if you're subject to zoning, then would the town planning board be responsible for what might be built in that area following? Am I not close enough?
You're not on.
How about that? So sorry.
Yes, so they, if you're in the ETJ, you do have to abide by our UDO.
So the UDO would govern space between buildings, sidewalks, blah, 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 if you're in, okay. Thank you. That's helpful. I, I was trying to learn some stuff.
It's over here.
So I have a question. When it comes to the One Mooresville Comprehensive Land Use Plan, is this board, should that inform the decisions of the board?
Yes. When you are giving your statements of reasonableness that we'll talk about a little bit later. So every decision of the planning board has to, the, the board has to provide a statement of reasonableness. And it, you should reference in some way the, the goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan, because that really is what should be guiding the decision and the development of Mooresville. A lot of times, the statements are given by staff, and so, you know, staff is very familiar with the land use plan. So there, the concepts of land use plan will be incorporated into like a draft statement.
Yeah, so I wonder, the reason I'm asking is, we had one case that came before us where a guy was doing, re-zoning to add a parking lot in front of his business. And the comprehensive land use plan said one thing, and this was slightly against that. Then we got two different recommendations. I guess one of them said approve it, and one of them said maybe disapprove it. So why wouldn't you just say disapprove it? Because staff recommends disapproval because it doesn't follow the land use plan. Or you always give us a choice, is what I'm asking.
Yes, I mean, ye, ye, yes. You should, you should reference it. However, it is a balance, your, your decision ultimately is a balancing act, right? So if there is, you know, a, another reason or a better public purpose reason.
Right, so we could recommend approve against the comprehensive land use plan, and then the board could say, well, no, we don't really want to do that.
Yes.
I guess, just to follow up on this too, with your comment, before you were on this, when we, when I first started, we got recommendations from the planning department. Every, every time we got a presentation, there was a recommendation, yea or nay. And then sometime last year, that stopped. So they tell us, as you go through those charts, yes or no, it's compliant with the plan or it's not compliant with the plan, which is what you're referring to. But for whatever reason, I'm not making a point of a question, I'm just reminding or just putting it out there. Because at the time, just said, hey, this is interesting. This month, we don't get recommendations anymore. And they said, yeah, that's what we decided. So...
Well, and, and staff is there to guide you on, you know, what the UDO says, what the comprehensive land use plan says. But, you know, ultimately, we want it to be your decision.
Don't we occasionally have recommendations where it also recommends some modification?
You can certainly mo, so especially for conditional zonings, you can certainly make recommendations to modify, you know, what... So typically, town staff has like the, like a sample, I guess, approval or denial, and you can certainly modify it however you'd like. Because ultimately, this is your decision. Like I said, staff is here to guide you and to answer questions, but it is ultimately the board's decision.
So why did you stop making recommendations then?
That's a really good question. I'm not sure. But I, like I said, I, I think it's ultimately your decision.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was a great question. Thank you.
Moving on, so open meetings laws. This is a right given in North Carolina to the general public to attend, but not necessarily participate in official meeting of public bodies. An official meeting occurs when a majority of the board gathers to transact public business. Please keep in mind that emails, text messages, those can all be considered a meeting if a majority of the board members are present. So if they're in that chain. And just a side note, board members can't be held personally liable for attorney's fees for a knowing or intentional violation of the open meeting laws. So keep that in mind. And going along with open meetings law, public records request. This is a request by someone for records that are subject to the public records laws. So most documents, most emails that are in the possession of the town are public. So keep that in mind. A quorum, this is the majority of the actual membership of the board excluding vacant seats. It is necessary to conduct town business, so if there is ever a meeting where we don't have a majority of the board members here, we could not, we could not open the meeting. Town ordinances, these are local laws adopted by the towns board of commissioners. Ultra-vires acts, this is when you act beyond your legal authority to do so. So I mentioned earlier that municipalities only have the authority that's granted to it by the state. Anything else would be void. Any other act would be void if you don't have the authority to do it. And then our UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, this is a set of ordinances adopted by the town that contains local regulations regarding land use, development, et cetera. Okay. So moving on to the duty.
Another question.
Yes.
So back to the, the last page. So town ordinances, just want to confirm, they need to comply with state statutes?
Yes.
So if a town wanted to have an ordinance, a noise ordinance, for example, there may or may be room in the statutes to have some kind of an ordinance, but it would have to fit in with that statute?
Yes, so state statute is going to always trump our local ordinances. You know, in that particular instance, we basically have authority from the state to create a noise ordinance, which is why the town has a noise ordinance.
It was just an example. I mean, you could, something else. So, so the structure of the whole UDO and everyone in every municipality and, and the town and, and the state has to fall with, is, is there by statute, have to have it, and it has to fall into this hierarchy of the statutes down through. Just getting back to the type of state we are as opposed to a home rule state versus...
Right, so, yeah, so I mean, we have like the entire UDO because we have this authority from the state to draft ordinances in order to regulate development.
Good, thank you. It's nice.
All right, so duties of the planning board. These are the various duties that are listed under state statute and the UDO. You, as a board, review the comprehensive plan and other plans related to development. You review and recommend policies, ordinances and administrative procedures. Facilitate and coordinate citizen engagement and participation in planning. You do provide, or you can provide a preliminary forum for quasi-judicial decisions. I don't think that that's currently being done, but that is a state allowed function.
It's because you have a board.
Correct. And then, as you're aware, you advise the governing board on plans, zoning text amendments, and basically do any other duties that the governing board directs you to. So duties of the planning board according to the UDO and what you do have to consider are the application, the support materials, staff report and public comments for each zoning amendment or zoning text amendment. You are required to give a recommendation and the basis or the rationale for that recommendation in writing within 30 days from the hearing. And you may recommend conditions related in type and extent to the anticipated impacts of a development.
I have a, just a question about public comments. So how much weight do you give public comments? In other words, everybody's always going to come here if there's traffic issues. But that doesn't usually decide whether a project gets approved or not.
Correct. How much weight you give it is really going to be up to you. There's really no hard line.
Yeah, so if there's 300 people, maybe we should think about it, but if there's two people...
It's, it's really a, a decision that you kind of have to weigh on your own.
It just depends on, yeah, I got it. Thank you. It was kind of an unanswerable question, but thank you for taking a stab at it.
Sorry, I know that's not a great answer.
They also look at, which they are not required often to have the traffic mitigation study before they come to us. A lot of times they do have that, and are they meeting or exceeding?
Are they meeting or exceeding what they, what that mitigation study? Now, a lot of times we don't have that information, but they will say that they promised to do whatever in the traffic mitigation, which a lot of them are very minimal, because maybe the DOT has already planned to turn lane or a light or something like that, and they don't have to do anything else. So that's when people are coming in here and complaining about traffic, personally, that's what I'm looking at. What is a traffic expert saying they need to do?
And I think that, sorry, I was just gonna say, and I think that also goes into this third bullet point. You know, uh, doesn't that, there's not a hard line rule of like how much weight to put on a public comment, but you can take that into consideration for like conditional rezonings if you want to propose like additional conditions or you want to modify proposed conditions.
Yeah, like we did for that. One where we said, don't build so many houses until this part of the traffic thing is completed.
Thank you, the public comment, you know, how weighing it in, it weighs at the next level big. So, you know, we didn't get elected, but commissioners do. Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, there are things we, that even the commissioners can't do, we can't do. But the public comment is an indication of the attitude of the residents. And that is something that has more impact, I think, on the commissioners who are elected people. I mean, I just.
Yeah, I remember the Costco thing that happened, so.
Well, the public comment also gives opportunity for this board to ask program questions that helps to set up the town board for their decision-making process. So if we can, I think always if we can listen and ask the better questions, then we, we really somewhat help set up or stage, you know, the next event for the town board to be more productive, you know, for all the council.
I think a good example too is that, you know, there are things like, traffic's an issue, yes. Authority over roads is complicated, but the community that came in out on one fifty and the folks that were here so involved in the environmental concerns, which we wouldn't even have known about, right? I mean, it was a surprise to me actually how much passion there was for folks about that. And that had an impact, I think, on us going back and asking them for a condition not, that they definitely are not going to use the, the, this, the lake access. Uh, there's probably other things that would come up, the most complicated because it's the biggest issue and the hardest for the town to do anything about is traffic.
Any other questions on the duties of the planning board? Um, so moving on to types of decisions and who makes them. So these are the four different types of deci- uh, primarily the decisions that are made by the town. Um, we have the legislative decisions, um, these are, um, these set policy through the creations of ordinances. And these are decisions that typically, um, there's a lot of discretion allowed. Um, so zoning amendments, these are legislative decisions. And so you, as a planning board, do have, you know, substantial discretion in how you want to make your recommendations. The town board has substantial discretion in, um, how to zone certain properties or what, um, what territories to annex in. Quasi judicial decisions, um, these are primarily going to be handled by the board of adjustment and the historic preservation. These involve fact finding, um, and it's more, I guess, court-like, um, and there are more strict procedural requirements. The advisory decisions, I'm sorry, that, planning board falls within the advisory decisions, but you do have discretion in how you want to advise the planning board, or how you want to advise the town board. Um, so as I mentioned, um, it's, your decision is not binding, but I do think that the town board, you know, seriously considers it and, and values it and takes it into consideration when they're making their legislative decision. And then administrative decisions are decisions that are made by the staff. So why does this matter? It, planning board matters because we are ensuring that the town is acting within its authority. We do a lot to protect citizens' rights. Our decisions should always be made with, um, a mind of, you know, not being overturned, making sure that you are, you know, stating your statements, in your statements of reasonableness, backing it up, explaining why you're making your decisions, um, and pointing out why something is in the public interest and why you're making that decision. And now we're going to talk about conflicts of interest. Um, so one way that we protect citizens' rights and prevent overturned decisions is to make sure that no one is voting in a matter in which they have a conflict of interest. Um, so the definition is, um, by state statute, a board member may not participate if the vote would be reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial impact on the member or where the board member has a close familial business or other associational relationship with the landowner or the applicant. So close familial relationship is defined as a spouse, a parent, a child, a brother, a sister, a grandparent, grandchild, and then all steps half and in-law relationships. So if you do have a conflict of interest, um, you do need to disclose that. There is typically then a vote amongst the other members whether or not to recuse you. And if you are recused for a conflict of interest, um, our rules of procedure do say that you need to step out so that you're not, um, indirectly influencing the vote at all. Some other, um, ethical items to be aware of, gifts and favors, you can't accept them. We do have a, um, conflict of interest policy and a code of ethics for our advisory boards like the planning board. Um, and if you want to read the full policy, let me know, I can send it to you. Um, other ethical things to be aware of, contracts for personal benefits, um, you, that would be a conflict of interest. Don't misuse your position, don't misuse any kind of confidential information that you get from being on this board. Um, and also just be aware of conflicts involving nonprofits. So if you're on the board of a nonprofit and that nonprofit is here as an applicant, um, you would have to disclose that and recuse yourself.
Just have a general question, so I, when I was in the service, we had a, you could accept a gift, but, you know, like somebody could take you to lunch, but it had to be below a certain level, is that the same thing with yours? Is it twenty bucks or twenty-five bucks or?
So you can't accept any kind of monetary gifts, the non-monetary limit is fifteen dollars.
Fifteen?
Mm-hmm. But in general, we would say to avoid it.
Yeah, pay, pay your way, yeah, thank you.
So now we're going to talk a little bit about what you should base your recommendation on. Um, and this chart is to kind of show you the difference between legislative and quasi judicial procedures. Um, but we're mainly going to focus on the legislature. Um, so the number of speakers, the statute doesn't limit the amount of speakers. Um, however, the board can. So if something is going to be very repetitive, if you have, you know, five people up here, or, you know, twenty people up here saying the same thing, um, there can be a limit, and we do limit public comment to ten or, ten people or thirty minutes. This is not an evidentiary hearing, so there's no, you know, evidence that is required. Um, there's no findings of facts that are required. Your voting is by a simple majority, um, and again, conflict of interest, the way that that's defined is a direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial interest or a close familial business or other associational relationship. Um, so if you have any of those, you must recuse yourself. So by statute, um, the sta- the state requires that when you're making your decisions, that you consider the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, that your regulations and decisions be made with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdiction. You should consider the comprehensive land use plan because that is the overall plan for the town. Um, so we want to make sure that our decisions are going to fit in with this overall view of where the town is headed. Um, input of staff, like I said, staff may provide technical analysis of permitted uses, comment on the adequacy of infrastructure and services, um, and provide you any kind of information that you think would be helpful.
Can we go back just a second? So, this is a really good chart, uh, a view to conserve, con- conserving the value of buildings. Are we talking about the buildings that are existing before the decision or after the decision, or what does that mean?
So you would be, could ser- like, you would be looking at the val- are you talking about like the existing building or thinking about the value of the new building?
I want to know what the second bullet means.
Okay, so you would be looking at, you know, the surrounding area and conserving the value of those buildings and the value of the surrounding area.
Yeah, maybe the, this is a quote from someplace, is that, I guess it's in this statute?
Correct.
Interesting, okay. Okay, thank you.
Additional considerations for recommendations, when it is a conventional rezoning, meaning a buy right rezoning, you do have to consider the full range of uses permitted. It is illegal to not consider all uses. For conditional rezoning, obviously consider the conditions. Like I said, um, you can modify conditions, you can ask the owner to agree to additional conditions. And then, um, reasonableness, think about, um, your statement of reasonableness and plan consistency. Reasonableness considerations include size, physical characteristics, the surrounding area, the benefits and detriments to property owners, the neighbors, a larger community, the relationship between actual and permitted development, and then in general, you know, you should always go back to whether or not an approval or a denial will be in the, in the public interest. That should really, that's really what it gets down to. So your statement of reasonableness and consistency statement, um, you should communicate reasons for or against the decision to the board. You know, let them know why you're recommending or why you're denying something. Um, give the facts that you relied upon and support your decision. Um, communicate, again, communicate why it's reasonable, why it's in the public interest. For consistency with the land use plan, you should always communicate what, whether or not it's consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. The comprehensive land use plan can be amended, um, so, you know, if you think it should be amended, you can certainly pose that.
I have a question. Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead. Under what, um, format are we to communicate how or why this action is or is not reasonable? Within the packets, there are the statements that we're supposed to read if we're voting to recommend it or voting to deny it. But separate and apart from that, if there are, uh, did you, or, do you want us to state publicly the reasons that we're not doing it? Or do, either approving or do not, recommending to approve or deny or whatever?
Yes, so those statements are in there to, you know, give you a, a proposed motion, but you're not required to read those motions exactly as is. If you want to elaborate, to communicate, you know, why you are and aren't doing something, that can certainly go into your motion.
Okay.
And that's also what the public, you know, the, the debate portion is about after, you know, you make the emotion, after a motion is made, but before the full vote is taken, um, that, that period for the board members to, to discuss and debate. I think that's really important, um, because the town board does listen and they, they will hear your comments.
That's what I was going to suggest, I think that's a great time to really expound on your reasoning, why you think this either, you know, meets or does not meet and, and why. And then I think the statements are fairly well crafted to go along with the key decision that you might make to say why this should be disallowed or allowed. And, and somewhat, I guess, bet it on these decision trees a little bit by staff because I know when they're written out, uh, it usually tells it does qualify one morsel plan. And the consistency with the land use plan, that was what I was talking about earlier. Occasionally we'll have a statement that it meets one, but it's inconsistent with the land use plan and suggests a modification statement of why it's inconsistent.
Correct.
I think even, there's been some cases where it's partially inconsistent, right? So the vote for would indicate where it is consistent, the vote against usually will have that terminology. So I, I will say the staff's done a pretty good job historically giving us, you know, sample verbiage that we could use in each of those, but to your point, you could always modify it as, as needed.
Well, and I think to your point, Nico, when you're, you know, when you're talking in our discussion phase and really outlining how this strikes you and where you don't feel like it lines up in these areas, that's a, that's a great time to really be able to elaborate a little more on that, you know, and then just read the statement and it probably lines up, you know, with what your thoughts were when you addressed the public about it.
Yeah, and, and I guess where I'm going with that is that, that falls in line with the wide discretion that we have because as I'm sure a couple of us know, that attorneys could look at the same photograph and say, this is consistent with X. And lord, no, it's not consistent with X. And I'm, that's why I'm, I guess I'm focusing on, um, uh, if, if, if it's impactful for us to, I'm voting this way, here's why, I'm not voting this way, and here's why.
No, I, I do think it's certainly impactful, like I said, I mean, I think it's, it, it's important.
You gotta make, make us, maybe a, a suggestion format wise. We haven't, we haven't actually followed Robert's Rules of Order, which is what you're talking about very well in the past. Because what happens in many cases in, in the last couple, three years that you and I've been here, everybody want to make a motion, like it's real quiet up here, and then somebody makes a motion. We get a second and then we vote. And I think under the, specifically Robert's Rules of Order, process would be motion, discussion, and get motion, second, discussion. And it, and i- if what, you, if the rest of you are buying what's being said here and asked, that would tee up the opportunity for anyone then, before the vote, to have any comments or questions or anything else, even though they may not disagree with the motion, maybe wanting to vote. Cause we have been, in the last year, we've come, we were a lot more vocal as a group than we had been in the past. But where I was looking at Robert's Rules of Order, you get your motion, you get your second, and then chairman asks for discussion. Even if it goes down the line or if there is none, and then you take your vote, which based on what we're being shown here in your question, I think that might facilitate reminding everybody that if you've got something on your mind, this is the time to bring it out, even if it's not going to change your vote or impact what you're going to vote, it might be important going to the next level.
And I'm happy to make a note and ask that question if you all feel like that would be helpful.
I don't know if that would be helpful or not, I just throw it out.
I feel like a lot of times we, we have the discussion before the motion. So in those cases, maybe it's not necessary, but if we have a motion, then maybe pause for any additional discussion before a vote.
Yeah, sometimes we're all talked out, and that's happened a few times. But I just remember back a lot of times where it's, there's a motion, in a couple cases, the hands went up, it went up, it got voted up, it got voted down, and then we said, any other motion? So then somebody, you know what I'm saying? Where sometimes we're getting more vocal and we're getting more involved. This would remind everybody, I think, if we, we followed that. Even if the question then was, since we had a big discussion on this particular one, we have a motion, and you say, is there any more comments before we vote? Anybody have anything else they want to say before we vote?
I feel like you've been doing that, Mr. Chairman, that you've been giving us the, uh, questions, comments, or whatever.
I'm not suggesting.
So I agree with what you just said there, but procedurally, I, I see where you're coming from, there's us- coming from, there's usually, in every other board that I've been on, there's a motion, a second, discussion, okay, let's vote.
And it doesn't mean there needs to be more discussion, and I don't think we've been restricted in discussing either.
I don't think so either.
But this would just invite the discussion.
We're happy to put a placeholder in just to, you know, create that option.
It just occurred to me that might be helpful. So I'm going to, I'm going, I'm going to, I'm going to stalk anyway.
Anyway, you answered my question, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? So we talked about what you have to consider, but let's talk about what you cannot consider. Impermissible considerations include protected classifications like race, religion, ethnicity, sex, national origin, disability, familial status, you can't take any of those into consideration, so you can't take the applicant's race, religion, ethnicity into consideration when you're making your decision. The inclusion of affordable housing, so unless an action is based on limiting a high concentration of affordable housing, it's unlawful to deny a development project simply because it includes affordable housing. And then-
Is it so only true that you can't deny because it doesn't have affordable housing?
I will need to look into that, I don't have an answer today. I will get back to you on that. And then a decision without some valid rationale related to land use would be seen as arbitrary and capricious. That's why it's really important when you're making those statements of reasonableness to include why you think something is in the public interest, why you think it's reasonable, why you think it fits with the town's land use plan, because all of that is going to be helpful for the record in the event that the town does get sued for making an arbitrary decision. So additional impermissible considerations of particular applicant, owner, or tenant, these are land use decisions, meaning they run with the land, and so if somebody sells that land, those, that those zoning conditions, that zoning still runs with the land, so you really shouldn't be basing your decision on the applicant. Decisions also can't be based on the form of ownership, so you can't base the decision on whether it's owned or rented, because either way, if you're building, if, if it's a single-family house, it doesn't matter if it's being owned or rented, it's still a single-family house. Decisions should be based on the community, so, again, just making sure that you reiterate why you think something is in the public interest. And then there are protection of particular uses, so the statute does have some state protections for certain uses such as manufactured homes, adult businesses, cell towers, family care homes, and then places of worship. So it may be tempting to ask about some of these considerations, but I would strongly recommend that you stay away from that, because even if it doesn't ultimately, you know, go into your statement of reasonable unless there are anything like that, if it's on the record and the town does get sued for making, and, for making an arbitrary capricious decision, or for making a decision that is based on an impermissible consideration, it's a lot harder to defend if your record clearly has a question in it that you should not have considered.
Yeah, I think this came up sort of at the last meeting where the gentleman, there was a question on zoning laws, either current or he could pick whichever one he wanted to use. So I think it was you brought up that, well, we're not, what we say now is going to stay with the land even if you're going to sell it. So that was kind of a light bulb for me, so I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think it was a light bulb for the developer who already said he was going to sell it, so.
The piece, and I, and I understand, you know, what we're allowed and disallowed in that respect, but the only relevant piece that comes to my mind, when we're looking at track home development, that's, that's built by a large corporation solely for rental, you know, so let's say I put up two hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollar, let's just say, average homes, and I'm just going to rent these, I'm not selling any of them. Well, I, I live in a world where everything is bought and sold not by the quality of the site, but by the quality of the owner and the cash flow that that owner generates. My concern sometimes with a large organization buying that, so we buy, we buy automotive centers, and because we have AAA credit, we get a lower cap rate, which means that center is sold basically on the rent that we provide for cash flow, and lower the cap rate, of course, the higher the dollar value, that doesn't have any reference to the piece of property itself, it's only being referenced on cash flow. The piece that that concerns me is that this developer builds two hundred and fifty homes, has great cash flow, has deep pockets, and has a great credit rating, sells that property to the next developer, just like happens with our apartment complexes, et cetera, and now the average homeowner is not paying a five hundred thousand dollar home price for a home that the increase is, you know, based on GDP or what the property's gone up, it now, you know, was maybe sold for seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar average because the cash flow was good and this developer's credit was high, that impacts now the basis of the analysis from the county, the city, for, you know, what's the property tax on it? And I don't, I don't know if anybody else has ever looked at it that way, but I see it in our world, you know, of cap rate sales, and it drives up and escalates property values, you know, in excess of what really the general property is, because it's totally based on a dynamic that has nothing to do with property, it's all about the cash flow, all of, you know, of the ownership. So anyway, just, just a thought when it comes to that, and we're, you know, thinking about those things, because it does drive up, you know, the general housing cost, which is something we think about because those affordable homes, how many years, I've been on this board a long time, and every single year, we're trying to think about how to include affordable housing, but yet, you know, when you're in a exciting market like we're in, where people want to be and large corporations want to invest, you know, that's actually working, it's kind of diametrically opposed to one another.
But it's also, it seems like it is along with the view of considering the value of the buildings. So I read that as if it builds up property value and increases the tax for the town, that's actually good, so.
It's, it's good for the town, it's just difficult for the average homeowner. I think our median price here today is almost about five hundred thousand, isn't it?
If you go back over here to own versus rented, you can't base your discussion, your decision on that.
Well, that's what I mean, it's, I understand that, but it's, uh-
Well, it's assuming the statute says you can't, state statute says you can't.
State law says that, yeah, you can't base, you can't-
That's an imp-
Ultimately, it's, it's, well, I understand that it's hard to not take that into consideration, ultimately, it's, it's because it's going to run with the land and not with the individual applicants.
I may take the question to the General Assembly sometime, just some of the friends I've got there and have the discussion, because it is, it is something that I know occurs that drives up the value in a more particular or discriminant fashion than the actual land value sale. The, the piece of property has nothing to do with it. Anyway, I got us on a rabbit hole, forget it.
Well, I really, I mean, it could have a very detrimental, long-term effect to neighborhoods and property.
Well, I'm, I'm just afraid, you know, I keep seeing our, our housing go up and we keep trying to talk about how to create affordable housing, and it, it just seems that that gap is getting farther, not closer, every year I sit on this board.
I had a question about the protection of particular uses. So, I think it was last meeting, vape shops came up, which we are a little sensitive about thanks to downtown. I think somebody in the planning department stated you have to have a special use permit for all vape shops, so there's no place that's allowed by right anymore?
That's a local decision, that was part of our UDO.
Okay, so, in a hot minute since I've had property law, and I know that you have to allow for everything, like, you know, the strip club has to have a place it can go, so we're never going to run afoul of vape shops because there will be someplace it can go, because the special use permit will go in front of the Board of Adjustment?
Yes.
Okay. Because like, I, you know, trying not to be discriminatory, but at the same time, you know, you're telling me you're plopping it into an area that at this point right now has nothing like that, I don't think we're going to be comfortable after looking at one fifty in downtown, putting it someplace, but I-
Yeah, so based on our UDO, vape shops can only go in certain districts and only after they meet certain standards for a special, for a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment.
So if we don't establish those districts in those areas, then they, then their only route is in an already established area through the Board of Adjustment.
Could you repeat that?
So if we don't establish the district that allows it, like last, it was a commercial zoning that included vape shops in it, that vape shop, if we'd allowed that to go through and it passed the Board of Commissioners, they would have then been able to apply for a special use permit for that area. If we don't allow it on the front end, they're limited to areas that are already zoned for that commercial zoning.
We had them scratch it as a condition, we had them scratch it as a condition-
Okay.
-from the zoning district they were wanting to go to, which would have allowed the vape, vape shops. We asked them to scratch it as a condition.
And it was an additional use, they had added it to, it was not in that base zoning district, they added it because they were going through conditional, and we were like, no, we don't want it, but there are other places that vape shops could go, so we're not going to run into a foul of-
Right.
Are you sure about that? Are you sure it was?
It was added, that's why we were all, yeah, that's why we, our antenna went up immediately.
And then we scratched five, I think like three were added and two were, that was like the amphitheater and stadium.
But I thought, James, I thought, no, I just want to make sure I understand this right. They're going from this zoning district to this district, and we start with a list of uses in that district. Can they add things when they come here?
They do conditional, sorry.
Yeah, it was conditional zoning is why they did that, it wasn't a straight, there were two parcels, one was straight rezoning and one was conditional-
Right.
-which was weird that it was different, but the straight rezoning didn't have vape shops in one of the allowed uses, but the conditional, they added it.
Yeah, and I didn't re, I didn't recognize that, I didn't think that was something that we would do, that if you're going from X to Z, here's your stack of Z, let's cross off the stuff we don't want you to do, as, as, if there's something here we don't like, we ask you not to ta, to do it if you want this rezoning for this use. So I didn't, even occurred to me that they may have added it.
So with, with all the conditional rezonings, those are a negotiation that both party has to agree to, so both parties have an opportunity to be part of that discussion. So that's why we tried to highlight that those were conditions they were trying to add in.
They were like-
Let me ask my question a little different, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So the UDO says that this zone allows these things.
Yes.
We can recommend to the town that they change that by doing it, a, a condition-
Yes.
-usually is more restrictive, so I, I just maybe didn't, wasn't smart enough to figure this out, that actually you could come in and add things into a district as a condition that were already not there in the UDO.
You can ask for it.
Okay, I, I guess I would like to make sure then that when we see that chart, which shows the lined out things, that if there's something in there that's not in the UDO, I don't want to have to go look at it, I'd like the planning department to say, these are being added, they are not in this zoning district, they're asking for these to be added, whether you make them a yellow, green, or whatever.
We put them in a separate section, that was the, we, we did try and call that out and make it explicit.
And my fault for not being smart enough to figure that out.
No, no, no.
But I just assumed that we were taking the district as, the zoning as it is, and we're, because then be, when I came a couple, two, three years ago, we weren't lining anything up. I mean, it just went over and everything was there, and, and, and so we got a little more aggressive here, saying, yeah, we don't really like that being in there, but that never occurred to me, people were actually asking for things that aren't even in the, that aren't in the UDO there, so, okay, okay, yeah, good catch, guys, I, I just didn't like it, I thought it was in there and we should take it out.
But to your credit, I think that's the only time in my time on this board that I've seen something added, conditionally added, it's always been conditional removals, so it was unusual.
Good.
And to your credit, maybe the only time you've ever missed something.
No, no, no. No, I brought it up because I didn't like it, but I didn't realize it wasn't already in that zoning district, so we didn't even have a big, it wasn't even a big deal, we just said, let's not, let's not have a big chat about this, take it out. Thank you.
I mean, I, I do, just to comment on that, I do think typically you are going to remove conditions rather than add, or like, remove uses rather than add them on, because, you know, the, the purpose of conditional zoning is to, is for the, the town to have some kind of certainty about what's going in there, and to know how, and to know how the property is being developed, so I think in most cases, they are going to be uses that are removed rather than added.
Yeah, I know, that's what I assumed, but, good, good discussion.
That one was sneaky, I definitely give you that.
Thank you, that's good, so we just, James, we just make sure we know when there, if anything's being added that's not actually there, I can't imagine I'm going to be booking up, picking up the big book and checking them all.
All right, so, just as like a summary for things that you should consider, and just keep in mind that all of this is a balancing act when you're making your decision, there's no hard line about how much weight you need to put on one thing versus another, it's all about how you're balancing out these competing interests that are listed here.
Before we go on to the next part, you teed up a question that I wanted to ask tonight since we have a chance, infrastructure is on this list, this last page. So, and maybe, I just want to bring it up for, for future thought, and maybe you guys aren't going to be that interested in it, if you aren't, I'll cut it real short. We've got, you know, we, we've, we are, I, I feel like we have pretty much restrictions on getting too involved in the traffic impact, past the traffic analysis for a specific site, which is done by professionals with a big book and all of that, and, and, and they have to agree to do those things. So, so specifically, I'm interested in, I'm interested in peninsula property, specifically Brawley School Road, I'm interested in, can we learn if you, if the planning department has it, or can we generate? How much available property is still out there? How much of it is county property, which is the one I, I'm concerned, well, it all comes together in the end, I'll just throw the whole thing out there and, and we can deal with it some, maybe another time, but can we see how much county property is out there? Most of it is zoned agricultural, residential, two per acre houses. What is the potential in the node that's out there at, at Stutz Road and, and, and Brawley, in terms of what potentially could go in there? And I'm tying this, going to tie this all back to the traffic, but in a different sense perhaps, maybe it can't be dealt with, but it's a peninsula, we have a nuclear power plant on our lake, and do we know what the capacity is for a reasonably safe evacuation of Brawley School Road, given what could possibly be built, with the base case being we have a node where we have ability to put apartments in at by right right now, I'm guessing that in that node, that we have five apartment buildings going now, we could have five or 10 more on the other side of the street. I have an auxiliary question, whether if they went in there, would they, would they have, if they're by right in there, would the new requirement of 25% commercial be applied? So we have, how much could be here, how much land down the way is still there, which is going to be and could be developed, and there's a lot of, there's some big open properties as well. I'd just like to get that- And there's a lot of, there's some big open properties as well. I'd just like to get that clear in my mind before we get the next county property that comes in with multi-family, multi-unit request. Uh, that, is there any leverage? Or are we okay? Could we build, fill up the node with by right and put whatever's out there, all the way out? All, two per, two per acre on every, every acre? And will we still have a reasonably safe way of getting people off of that peninsula? Well, well, I know, James, James, I know James knows that, but I'm just, I, I, yeah, no, it's not our job. I mean, it is, it is, but, but it's our job to decide if somebody's got several acres of farm out there. Now we want to put another three or four hundred apartments out there. When we make that decision, shouldn't we know that in our, in our, in, in the node that we have right now? That there's property there that is already by right for multi-family housing and how much is, how many houses could go there? And, because I know the, the last one that we did, we did a small one down, uh, down that little lane, the, which was the, which is condos. We did a hundred and ten units, which were the triplexes, which was a conditional zoning. And then after the triplexes came in and got done, we learned that there was a by right, three hundred and eighty apartment building, a hundred and, that's three thirty. Hundred and eighty apartments, three, five buildings, thirty, that are all, now they're going in on a co, corner there. And when the next one comes, will we know what could go X in that node? And is there some limit to that two-lane road in the event of the need for an evacuation on that peninsula? And if there is, would that be a justification for us to say no? We don't want to take that county property for multi, multi-unit density. So I, I'm not expecting any answer to that, and I hope I didn't go too far off of the, off of the agenda here. But we look, talking to infrastructure, and we've always been kind of told, yeah, but we don't control the roads because they're mostly owned by the state. And for us to be able to say you can't do something, or to have a moratorium specifically, you have to be able to address the problem that you have. Troutman maybe has a sewer problem. So they're going to have a moratorium because they don't have enough sewer to keep putting stuff up there. We went through with everybody here. And nobody was able to tell us they couldn't manage what was coming.
I just wonder if it's practical to plan on a worst-case scenario. I don't think that's practical.
Yeah, I'm not talking about practicality, I suppose. Well, I'm just asking the question. I mean, does, does the emergency preparedness people, do they have a thought? Is, is there somebody that has an idea? That when you get X number of cars and people living down this way, if there's a problem at the power plant, we don't think you're in a good place to get everybody out of there in a reasonable time. And, and if we knew that, if that was, if somebody said that, and we knew that was the case, would that impact your decision to put more people down there in multi-family housing? When you know that all of the property that's in the county right now can be built, two, two houses per acre? And how many is that coming, adding already that we are not going to have any say in?
You make a good point. I, I, I think that's, I mean, you make a really, really good point. But that's part of the project-specific discussion that we would have in consideration, whatever, everything, the project would be at the time.
And I'm just looking ahead.
Yeah.
That's why I'm trying to look ahead and say, can we look at, can the planning department look at that? I know you got a lot to do and got a lot of new people, but can somebody look at that? It's reasonable to look at that and say at some point in time, we may have an additional reason not to want to take the Johnson's Farm and put seven hundred more units on there. Because we know we can only have things going here and blah, 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 blah. And we know that in the county, there are another two thousand properties that could be developed.
Uh, that would, that would for us be a reason to express concern and, and, and deny the project under, you know, until, you know, further studies are done on that particular subject.
Sure. I mean, that can certainly.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that can certainly go into your consideration. Um, you know, like I said, if you bring it back to public safety, public interest, what is in the public interest? So certainly that information can be used when you make your decision. Um, but no, I mean, I think those are good questions. And, you know, help address those for specific projects.
Last point, we're a property rights state. We honor the opportunity for people to harvest their property. And that's a high standard in the state. And so we have to jump over high hurdles to say, no, you can't do that. It's your property and, and this is something you can't do with that property. U D O is, is there, but we get faced with decisions not knowing what else is already in the pipeline. I mean, we heard that early on when we got here. Well, there's a lot of stuff coming and you're going to be surprised, but it's been approved a long time ago. And so tonight, we're talking about this hundred and ten units that's going over here. But there might be a whole bunch of other stuff going to happen. And, and it's one thing if it's not a peninsula, but basically when you go, when you get, when you get by Morrison Plantation Boulevard, that's it. There's two ways there, and after that, there's only one way out of there. Well, and maybe that's the answer. Maybe that's the answer. Maybe there isn't a problem. And maybe it's not something that would be helpful. I, I'd be interested to know if there's anything we can look at. And I'm not going to hold your feet to the fire. I just wanted to get it on the table.
Well, I think, I think it's a good question. You know, Jeff's point, you know, we talk about some of that in the traffic mitigation, but also to the earlier discussion around asking good questions. That's also a good question, I think, when the traffic engineer is giving their mitigation about a project. You know, what happens, you know, again, build a little case basis in the discussion. You know, we've already got X amount of multi-family here. In this mitigation, what happens in the event of an emergency? When you've got just this one way, you know, of ingress egress on this entire peninsula? And, and let them expand on it a little bit too, because again, they may bring up some things. Just like Richard's talking about, that may, you know, that we may not even be thinking about. You know, that in a, in an event of an emergency, you know, this is what happens. We shut down the roads. It's all exit, no entry. You know, we guide people one way, you know, whatever that may be. That's it, but.
I, I don't want to hang it on the emergency situation. I think it's part of it in my mind, but I, I do think not knowing, having a good idea, what is the capacity of that peninsula? And what's already possible based on by right?
It almost sounds like it's a way to, I don't want to say that, never mind.
Okay, but, but, but eventually somebody's going to come with property that's county property and ask to be annexed.
I'm just saying, so you can't really tell somebody that they can't develop their property based on infrastructure concerns, right? I don't think that's legal now in the state. So you're kind of trying to get around that by saying, we, we understand you want to put a three hundred person place in here, but there's not enough capacity if the nuclear power plant goes for you to get out of there, so we're going to stay out.
That's probably not going to fly. I agree.
That's what I mean. So I don't, I don't see how that's even a productive line of.
No, maybe it's not.
Permissible or impermissible.
Really the traffic engineering firm to the state standard that's creating the yea-nay. You know, mechanics that either says yes, it's doable, or no, it's not. And if it is doable, it still may be an F on its rating. It may be a bad rating, but.
Even if it wasn't an emergency, is there a, is there a saturation point to the infrastructure that's currently on that peninsula? I mean, it wasn't all the zoned peninsula residential for nothing. That peninsula word was put in there for a reason at the time that people did that. But it doesn't seem to make much impact anymore. That's my opinion, for what it's worth.
Well, I did write down, you know, your list of concerns, and I think that we can certainly talk to staff about that, you know, before the next project comes up where, you know, that's a concern.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to bring up the nuclear thing. I brought it up in front of you guys because I trust you. I bet, that's not, that's not the real, it is a possibility, but it's not. I, I see a two-lane road that's probably not going to be widened again, and I just, we, we are going to get somebody come in eventually to the planning board, to the town, and say, I've got five hundred acres. I could put, I could put, you know, a thousand houses on it, and they'll pay me three million dollars, or I can put this on it, and they're going to pay me fifteen million dollars. And this is what I want to put on my property. And, uh, and then, and then, does, does the infrastructure limit on Brawley School Road at all? And how would we know? That's, I'm, that's what I struggle with. How would we know what's there and what could be built?
I think it's too late. Ever tried to get down Brawley School Road when one lane is shut because they're doing the power lines? And you're backed up four miles? I mean.
Well, it, I know, it's, it's not too late to make it worse. Okay, sorry. I apologize. Sorry. Just so excited not to have a case tonight.
Do we want to take a break or? Not that much longer. Um, this slide is going to be really quick. These are just, like I said, um, earlier, one of the things that I wanted you to get out of this was just some best practices for how to prepare for these meetings. Obviously, review the agenda. If there are written public comments, you'll get those in advance at the meeting. Review those. Um, notify us if you think you might have a conflict of interest, especially if this is going to affect quorum. I think it's really important that you go ahead and tell us so we know. You, you can visit the area of town to be familiar with it when discussed. Just don't go together as a majority of the board, so don't make it an open meeting. Um, review the U D O sections that are involved. If you have questions, reach out to the planning department, reach out to us. Think of questions that you might have before the meeting. During the hearing, listen, ask good questions. Think about whether or not what you're asking is going to be an impermissible consideration, just so that we can keep the record clean. Um, and then don't engage directly with the members of the public. Um, even if they try to engage you during public comment, we do typically have a policy that we don't respond right away. If they need a response, they can leave their email, their phone number with, um, planning department, and we can get back to them individually, not at the meeting. Um, and then focus on the right things. Is the request consistent or inconsistent with the one Mooresville plan? Is it in the public interest? Why? For conventional rezonings, don't trust renderings and promises because they're not tied to it. If it's a conventional rezoning, then they can use the property for any of the permissible uses. Um, and then for specifically text amendments, um, think about how that text amendment can be applied to other situations. Don't base text amendments based on your applicant in that one particular area. Think about what, if any, slippery slope it'll cause.
So, sorry, so just the second to the last bullet, this kind of tie, this kind of points out the fact that sometimes I've been under the impression that, you know, we, we can't get too much into what it's going to look like. Some come in with, come in with certain standards in terms of what the, you know, so on. But what I'm reading here is if you're coming in for a conditional zoning, we can ask about that.
Yes.
And we can say, we'd want to, can we ask, we'd like to see a little more crisp drawing of what this is going to look like.
Yeah, so for the, that second to last bullet, that's only for conventional rezonings and by right rezonings. For conditional zonings, there's typically a condition on there saying that they're going to abide by their concept. Um, and so.
Right.
They are bound, once those conditions are in place, they're bound by that concept plan. So for conditional zonings, you, you do have a lot of discretion in asking for certain conditions so that you know what it's going to look like.
But sometimes like for the little village, the little, little houses, remember that? I mean, they wouldn't even claim that that's what they were going to look like. These came out of a book. I mean, and we were, you know, I mean, basically, these came out of a book and, and this guy and, and so on. So we want you to, we want you to give us, and there wasn't enough there in my, but I got the impression, and, and that's what I'm asking about this. Now, I, I get that's for conventional, so we could press harder to have a more idea about what something is actually going to look like if we have concerns that it's something unique. Obviously, when you get into the sections of the U D O, there's a lot of specifics about buildings and so on and so forth.
Right, but I mean, there are conditions that, you know, some developers have agreed to for, you know, they're going to use certain materials. Or they're going to stay away from certain materials when they're building certain things.
Without a question. We've seen that. But we've also seen where there's nothing. Am I right? I mean, we've also seen where there's basically nothing. It's going to be, it's going to be nice.
And that's when you can modify certain conditions, um, as long as it's within the realm of the U D O and the state statutes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I have some very quick hypotheticals. So Jim, a biking fanatic and involved community member, is the owner of a local bike repair shop and serves on the town planning board. Jim has been in business for many years and is well-known in the community. Jim's friend Daryl, seeing how much fun Jim has as a small business owner, has decided to follow suit. Daryl prepared a business plan and is working to open a bike repair shop of his own. Daryl is now before the planning board requesting rezoning to be able to build his shop. What should Jim do in this situation?
I don't see why.
And when someone volunteers that information, it's up to us to ask the question if they, we think they can make a sound decision, you know, or an impartial decision, and take a vote on that.
Yes.
Unless, unless he just, that individual feels, you know, I'm just too close to this. I probably would be jaded. Better that I step away from the situation.
Yes, that's a really good point. You do have a duty to vote, so you can't conflict out of everything. But if you have a legitimate conflict, like you have a direct relationship or a direct financial interest in this, or it's, the applicant is your spouse, um, in the, in those cases, yes, you should conflict, you should conflict out. However, like I said, you can't do that for every case, um, because you do have a duty to vote.
But wouldn't the case here be, be specifically that he would only be in a conflict of interest if he was going to be competing with it? It doesn't have any financial, direct financial impact. Isn't that what we said that the condition was for conflict of interest? I think he should tell the board, hey, I, I mean, I'm helping him with this. I don't think I want to do it. But specifically, does he have a conflict of interest under the, what you told us before? It had to be a specific direct financial or familia, family connection. And he doesn't have either.
Or, yeah, so there's, there's the issue of competing business, but there's also the close association or relationships. There's something that I would probably want to know more, is how good of friends are they? Like, are they such good friends that he can't be unbiased in this situation? So, I mean, I think these are, you know, good points, but ultimately, yes, it will be up to the rest of the board members to decide whether or not to recuse, um, Jim, even if he discloses.
Well, but they would still be friends, right? So.
Well, I just, I'm, I've announced I'm closing my shop. I'm retiring, so there's a little conflict of interest, but yes. I just question whether it was written to assume that there's going to be a conflict of interest. If there's no conflict of interest, he doesn't have a.
Yeah, yes. Um, and just to answer your question real quick, we didn't really write these with the idea that there's a conflict of interest. It's more to just get you to discuss, like, what questions would you ask? So there's really not a clear answer on any of these, if I'm being honest. It's just to get you thinking about if, if you were to take a vote right now, what questions would you have? Any other discussion on this one?
Other than I ride ten thousand miles a year and I'm an avid bike fan, so why should I step aside?
Yes, you should. That's good competition. You might get cheaper parts.
I like that.
You got two to go too.
All right. Hypothetical number two. Rochelle serves with Jim on the town planning board. A real estate investor from Miami has purchased a large tract of land near Rochelle's condo complex. The investor has decided to build several large homes, which will likely sell for over a million dollars. Rochelle heard from her neighbors that the investor is all about making a buck and does not build quality homes. Even worse to her, she hears that the investor already has interested buyers from Miami. Should she participate in this discussion and vote on a rezoning? And what factors can the board not consider? So I guess we can start with the first one. Um, does anybody think that she has a conflict of interest?
No, she has information.
Depends on what the definition of near is. Maybe joining her property, probably a conflict of interest. In the town of Mooresville, everything is near. We wouldn't be able to do anything.
Disclose it.
I agree. Put it out there. I live down the block. I live near. Put it up for a vote.
I think you're always better off just to let folks know.
Yeah.
Be transparent.
Absolutely.
Best practice is if you, if it's, if something is in your gut, give it up.
Yeah. Exactly.
I agree.
That, that I think is the best practice. Hey, just letting you know, I know X, Y, and Z because whatever the reason is or this. And then let, let the rest of us vote on it. I think that's the best practice.
I agree.
I agree with that. It's, it's better for us to turn that to you or, or to Carrie, let you ask that question relative to them being impartial and let us take a vote. You know, if they, if they feel good about it and convincing, you know, in terms of being able to roll forward, you know, then I think we can pick up on that.
All right, so what factors can the board not consider when they're looking at this?
It shouldn't be relevant that they're from Miami, right? So location of, of the investor wouldn't matter.
I don't know that the quality of the build matters. We don't, you don't know who's actually going to build that, and that's what the inspection department's for, not us.
Yeah.
Yeah, the quality to build is not, that's just hearsay. I mean, we've got standards and, and they're going to build, they're going to have to. We have to assume that they're going to build to the standards of the UDO, and the inspection department's got to hold it to proper quality. So I don't think that would be at all.
Quality is relative as well. Your quality and my quality could be different.
We're not asking what homes sell for, such as that.
All right. Moving on, um, Tim likes to build. He especially likes to knock things down, build them bigger. He has a lot of machines, including his digger, his dumper, his cement mixer, his crane, and steamroller. Um, Tim is building three sets of townhomes for himself, his business partners, and his workers on a 30-acre tract of land. He would like to build a commercial office space for his development business and store his machine in the parking lot behind the office. Tim's 30-acre parcel is zoned for residential uses only. He is seeking a conditional rezoning so that he could have these mixed uses on his property. What should the planning board consider when looking at Tim's request? And then what if, instead of a conditional zoning, he decides to go for a conventional zoning? But he promises to the board that he will only use it for stated purposes? So if you, I guess we'll start with the conditional rezoning. What can the board consider?
I think buffering, because I mean, it's residential to commercial. Yes, it's a related owner now, but in the long term, they have different owners of the townhomes and different owners of the commercial business. And he's got a lot of equipment, but it could be a lot more and a lot louder. So you want to make sure that the, it's appropriately buffered with whatever is recommended by staff. They usually know how wide that needs to be more than we do.
We talked about conditional zoning earlier. We can get, we can get predefined on that, can't we? In terms of the conditions around what we might accept.
You can, I'm sorry?
We can get pretty, pretty granular and defined around the conditions we would accept. We're talking about conditional zoning.
For conditional zoning, as long as you're not running into any of those impermissible classifications, um, and as long as you're not running afoul of the statute, then yes, you, you have a, you have a decent amount of discretion for a conditional zoning.
So when you're, so when you're thinking about something in the context that Laura's describing, you know, adding buffering, you know, the things like we were talking about earlier that will go with the land throughout its life cycle and that those, those attributes have to be maintained properly, et cetera, over time. And you could add all that in to somewhat build that buffer and qualify that land to meet that objective.
Right. So what if he is seeking a conventional rezoning that allows a lot of different uses? But he promises to the board that he will only use it for his stated purpose?
I don't think we lean on promises.
Yes, that's correct. So this one did have a yes or, or this one did have a correct answer. Um, you can't consider it, it is illegal to not consider every single use for a conventional rezoning. And the last hypothetical, Leslie is well-known and popular town council member, who is the owner of a breakfast-themed food truck. Leslie has decided that the law needs to change with the changing times. The current town ordinance only allows beer and wine to be served in special, in certain business districts. Leslie's food truck can go anywhere and frequently caters parties and events. Leslie wants to be able to offer mimosas to her customers in accordance with state alcoholic beverage laws, um, on private property. She's asked for a text amendment allowing wine and beer to be served in any zoning district, if done so from a business that also sells food. She believes that adding mimosas to the menu will drum up business. It might even encourage those who are not interested in breakfast to stop by and see what she's all about. Of course, you'll be very responsible in serving. So assuming that there are no conflicts with ABC laws, um, what should the board consider in approving or denying this text amendment?
I don't think it matters that she's a commissioner, she's coming to us as a business owner.
The law of unintended consequences, what would it do to change this for her to all the zoning districts?
Right. Do you want your ice cream truck driving around selling wine or beer in a residential neighborhood? All right. Um, last couple of points. Feeling to follow procedure or making decisions not based on proper facts can leave the town in the position of defending an expensive lawsuit, putting our resources and reputation at risk. Um, when you're making your decisions or you're stating your decisions or when you're asking questions, it is really important for the legal department anyway that there be a clean record, um, so that if we do get sued, we can, you know, point to the permissible considerations and reasons.
So if the planning board just recommends to the pain board, how much liability do we actually expose the town to? They're the ultimate decision.
They are the ultimate decision authority, however, um.
That's saying we shouldn't do our job.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, I, that's a good point. This is only an advisory board. However, I do think that if they're.
Hell, yeah.
Yeah, I think that ultimately, because these are public meetings.
Everybody in.
Yeah. Ultimately, because these are public meetings and public bodies, whenever there's a lawsuit, they're going to be looking at every step of the process. Um, and so even though this is an advisory committee, it is really important that, that, yeah, that, um, we, we keep a clean record.
I do understand a little bit about the developer's side, not defending the developer. By the time they get to us, the examination process, on a big piece of land they're looking at for residential or commercial, they could be between $200,000 and $500,000 deep invested money out that they don't get back. So when we talk to them, I think we need to show them a bit of respect because they're skin in the game. We don't have to like their project, but this goes back to, there's a lot of emotion, believe it or not.
Plus, they've been on the planning board multiple times, they're probably talking to commissioners. They've seen it multiple times, we'd see it a lot.
Right. And there's been a lot of back and forth. They don't just end up here with one submission. It's probably been work-throughs multiple. And each time you engage the architects and the land engineers, it's $5,000 here, $10,000 there, $20,000. And again, I'm not defending them. But I think we need to be, we need to be able to hear them, and we can push back 100%, but.
But they've also paid for these flashy presentations where they promise a buffer that they already had to give. They always put the stream buffer in there, and guess what? They already had to do it. So you have to, like, look past their smoke and mirrors and what are we actually getting? Because if it's conditional, they want something. What are we getting in return? Because there has to be some back and forth.
And this is my final note. Bad decisions made with good intentions are still bad decisions. So just, you know, be thoughtful, be considerate, um, in what you're, in what you're doing. And we appreciate, we appreciate all that you do for us. I mean, oh, sorry, any questions? Oh, here are some resources. Obviously, if you have any questions, feel free to contact James, Carrie, me, anybody in the planning department. Um, and then there are just some other general, um, general resources, like the School of Government. Great place to, if you have a question about any kind of land use, um, question. It's a great, they have a great blog. I would highly recommend. Any questions? Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen? Appreciate that very much. I was going to ask you, have we ever, that you're aware of, have we ever put out a case that turned around and got the town sued?
Costco.
Um, we have had several.
But that, the Costco piece wasn't us. We approved it. It, it was the town board that they, yeah.
Oh, you're talking about.
The planning board. I'm, I'm thinking, has there been anything that we've had? Oh, okay. So they just basically base it all the way back to us regardless of that. Or, okay. I didn't know if we'd made a decision that was specifically bad for the developer that they had taken a lawsuit out because of a decision we made.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't think so. I, and I give this board a lot of credit, uh, and I do like, and, um, you know, Laura, when I, when the text amendments come up, I, I think of you, because you always, you approach those. And Miko, you may end up adding that same type of perspective because from a legal background, I think you all look and you read between the lines very well. And so you bring a lot of comment, you bring commentary forward in some of those that I don't always think about. And, and that's what I like about this board. I think it's got good diversity to it. Uh, I think, you know, it's like Michael's talking about. There's been a lot more discussion over the past couple of years. You know, and I've had some good feedback, you know, from town commissioners with that. So I think they do pay more attention, and that discussion helps drive out other questions that they can ask and, uh, other involvement they can have looking at those cases that come in front of them. But I always appreciate that and appreciate this board. You all help me out every time I'm up here because you give me good thoughts to think about and what we're trying to achieve. With that, I'll shut up.
Long day? Time for adjournment?
Oh, it is. Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else to discuss, then we are adjourned? Pardon?
Motion.
Well, I will ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?